All right, thank you. Welcome everyone to the Monday, June 13th, 2016 Special Committee on the Opioid Epidemic. Can everyone please rise and join me with pleasure, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for a men and women's service. Please also observe a moment of silence for all of the folks that we've lost due to this epidemic of opioids. And please remain standing for the horrific acts of terror that killed at least 50 people. A very, very sad day in America. And for the LGBT community, we send out our prayers to all and their families. Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Semino, can we have the roll call, please?
Braintree Town Council Special Committee on the Opioid Epidemic Meeting of Monday, June 13th, 2016. Councilor Kors.
Here.
Councilor Clifford.
Here.
Councilor Hume.
Here.
Councilor Owens.
President.
Councilor Powers.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a number of minutes that we will review, and once they are approved, they will be posted. We have no old business, and we do have some announcements. Councilor Hume.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. An event, Robin Houston Bean, is Beanstalk, will be here at Town Hall in memory of Nick Bean. It's a music festival featuring Kuwait Grips, Jump Start, Nova, Below Sea Level, and many more. There will also be addiction resources, as well as an overdose candlelight vigil outside Town Hall in front. The date is Friday, July 5th, here at Braintree Town Hall from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. There's a minimum donation onliner at the door. For more information, you can visit beanstalk2016 event bright dot com. And again, it's Beanstalk in memory of Nick Bean. What did I say?
July 15th.
Oh, July. Did I say the wrong day? July 15th. Sorry, July 15th, 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's Friday night. So I hope you can all attend, and it will benefit the Sun Will Rise Foundation. One more. And then each meeting, we, the state came out with a program, the State Without Stigma, to end the stigma of addiction. And all of us here in this committee, as well as many residents of the town, have taken the pledge to end the stigma of addiction. You'll see these, there's a social media campaign throughout the state, as well as billboards, whatnot, here in Town Hall. Anybody who has taken the pledge, we are putting this up on the walls. We're also putting it on the Council Special Committee on the Opioid Epidemic Facebook page, as well as Twitter. You take the pledge, and you will, I'll read it. "The stigma of drug misuse keeps people from seeking treatment. Words like junkie, addict, and druggie can hurt, damaging self-image and standing in the way of recovery. Addiction is not a choice. It's a chronic disease similar to diabetes, heart disease, and arthritis. So by taking this pledge, you will help support ending that stigma. I encourage all of you to attend. Again, you can come into Town Hall. It's in the lobby. You sign the pledge, and we will post it for you." Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to kind of recap where we are very quickly, this is our 15th meeting since April 10th. And we continue to have subject matter experts come into us. When we started this, we said we'd be a committee of action. We have, even as we continue through this. It's important to point out that tonight's subject matter expert is Representative Mark Cusack, and he's going to update us on a grant from the state to fight this opioid epidemic of $150,000 and where it stands. Moreover, the mayor of Braintree during the budget cycle has put in $109,000. So collectively, it's $259,000 that we can start to apply to battle this epidemic. And we plan on seeking out resources, such as the Drug Prevention Coordinator that Waymouth and Quincy and Stoughton and Avon and many, many other towns have. With that, we had a couple of terrific guests in here, or subject matter experts last week with Attorney Thomas, Thomas, Thomas Cardwell from DA, or the Attorney General's Office, Maura Healy. And then we had Norfolk County DA Michael Morrissey and his staff, Janice Rowe, Jennifer Rowe, and State pharmacist David Morgan. Outstanding information and presentations that they provide, provided us. At the end of this series of meetings, which have been rapid, and our learning curve has been sharp, there will be a report, a full report issued that contains our observations, findings, the financial gaps that may exist, so that we can start to initiate prevention measures within the town of Braintree. And just one other thing, this is the best working committee I've had the opportunity to be associated with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clifford. And I'm sure everybody agrees with that statement. I will say that the State Without a Stigma, such an important step in combating this epidemic. You know, I can't say enough about the need for everyone to understand removing the stigma is, is something that everyone needs to do. And if folks come to pay for their trash fee, which I know that just came out, paid for mine, so I get my little sticker for my vehicle, they can come in and sign it, sign, put their signature on it, and show that they care, and show that they want to be part of the solution. So I can't say enough about, about that pledge. Tonight, we have State Representative Mark Cusack, who has been an advocate in the legislature for us as a town, but also for victims of this terrible disease. And he has been part of many pieces of legislation that have moved us in the right direction to helping folks in need. And I welcome you and thank you for coming tonight, Representative Cusack.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And three to the members, and members of the public. I'm here tonight, as Councilor Clifford mentioned, to update on the money I was able to secure in the House budget. But I want to broaden that out to kind of capture what the efforts have been of us in the legislature, working with the governor. We've been dealing with this. I sworn in 2011, and it was one of the first major bills taken up. And since then, we've done three major pieces of legislation. I'll just walk through tonight, because I think they're incredibly important in this fight. You know, when I came in 2011, even a little bit before that, you know, there's been a dramatic shift in awareness, in not just, you know, awareness of this problem because of the, all the people affected by it, the families, people struggling with the addiction. But it's been an important shift away from this being viewed as a drug problem and a criminal justice problem, I will say rightfully so, to a public health crisis and a serious illness. And changing that, as you mentioned, the stigma campaign, that it's allowing us to get more done, shift the conversation to treatment, education, awareness, and all that. And it's making a dramatic difference in terms of what we're able to get past in the State House. And hopefully, we'll start to see the results of that, dealing with this crisis. The major bill this year was the Substance Abuse Treatment, Education, and Prevention Legislation. We're just going to walk through some of this. Sorry if it gets into too many details, but they're vitally important in this fight. 24-Hour Substance Abuse Evaluation. It requires hospitals to conduct a detailed substance abuse evaluation to each person presenting in the emergency room with symptoms of an opiate overdose. This must take place within 24 hours of their admittance or being brought to the hospital. Post-evaluation, patients are given the option to engage in voluntary treatment and connected to services inside or outside the hospital setting. If the patient refuses treatment, information on community resources are provided to encourage access to treatment. And for people under 18, it requires parental notification of overdose and mandatory substance abuse evaluation. And parents are permitted to hear the findings of the evaluation. And lastly, substance abuse evaluations are covered, mandated to be covered by insurance. The next big piece of this bill was the seven-day script limit on first-time opiate scripts. On adults, it's, for the first time, it's seven days. They can only be prescribed opiates. But for minors, it's at all times. They can only be given a script up to seven days. There's obviously exceptions built into this for adults and minors for emergency conditions, chronic pain, and cancer diagnoses. And it establishes a non-opiate directive form, allowing patients to include a notation in their own file that they have issues with opiates. And in January 1, 2017, the electronical medical record is, which was passed as part of law in 2012, will come online. So every patient in the Commonwealth will have an electronical medical record. And no matter where you are in the state, what doctor you see, that goes into one record, and it's accessed by everyone going forward. And that's going to make a huge difference in tracking these issues. It also provides an option for a patient, for when they get a prescription, to ask for a partial fill. That'll only be filled to whatever they request, and the pharmacist agrees to. And whatever is left on the table automatically goes away, and it's not usable In 2012, as part of a bill, it was a prescription monitoring program was put in place. And what this did was say that every physician or prescriber, when seeing a new patient, had to run their information through the prescription monitoring program to make sure that this person wasn't pill shopping, which is a major issue. And since that inception in 2012, there's been a dozen, about a dozen doctors who have been fined or suspended for their over-prescribing. And there's been many more patients who have been stopped from, you know, going to go pill shopping. Screenings, this is one of the more controversial pieces, but I think we got it, hopefully got it right in this. It requires school districts to conduct substance abuse screenings in two grade levels. And also, it does allow for school districts to opt out if they already have such programs in place. And with the schools, too, every public school is, system is now required, working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to have a substance abuse education policy. There's resources available to the school districts to work with DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the Department of Public Health, to provide them with resources in establishing these policies, and to make sure that they are using the most up-to-date information when they're educating the students. And beyond that, there's also additional education materials required for student athletes. Because we see all too often, that's where a sports injury leads someone down this road. It also requires a drug stewardship program from drug manufacturing manufacturers, working with DPH, they can help with their alternative program. But the goal is to get excess opiates and drugs off the streets and out of people's homes and disposive. So this requires the manufacturers to be part of that solution for the first time. And this is, you know, beyond the drop boxes we have at every police station in Norfolk County. Over the past few years, the legislature's efforts related to substance, substance addiction has also focused on behavioral health and mental health. And a lot of what you see is co-occurring conditions. And this bill also directs the Department of Public Health working with the Health Policy Commission to do a full study of the state, so we get better data on, you know, being able to track co-occurring conditions, making sure, you know, there's not too much, you know, one part of the state might have a different need than the other. So trying to make this parity across the board, making sure that our resources are going where they will do the most good. The bill also requires that contact information for all insurers be posted on the Bed Finder Tool website, and updates the law to ensure the site is available 24 hours a day. The Bed Finder website is a key tool in helping get someone treatment. I've dealt with this with constituents, where until this website, you were really just calling around, asking if they had a bed available. So there's been a real effort to, you know, harness technology. In fact, Jack Kelly, who's a Boston guy, is even developing an app to deal with bed finding, and when meetings are, and all that. So technology's going to be a big part of, hopefully, solving this. It also requires that patients be discharged from substance abuse addiction, receive information on all FDA-approved medication-assisted therapies. And the bill, one of the amendments I co-sponsored, was to make sure that the seven-day limit didn't apply to the suboxone and other drugs that people use to help wean themselves off opiates. Another key part was ensuring civil liability, protection for any individual who administers Narcan, that if there's an accident while trying to save someone's life, that they can't be held liable. Similar to, you know, other Good Samaritan provisions throughout substance abuse laws. And the last big piece was it requires all prescribers to complete training relative to the risks and benefits associated with opiates, including prescribing guidelines and overdose prevention. So that was the bill that Governor Baker signed, I believe it was two months ago, three months ago now. So it is on the books, other legislation this session that is now law. For years, when women were involuntarily committed, they had, were ordered to Framingham State Prison, where frankly, not well-equipped to deal with this issue. We changed that, that now they're either sent to Shattuck or Taunton State Hospital for treatment. And this has been something that's been, you know, needed for over 30 years, and glad it's finally changed. And another big bill was on fentanyl. Fentanyl, as you know, is a substance that is either substitute or add-in on heroin. And up until this law, it was not a crime to traffic in it. So now trafficking more than 10 grams of fentanyl is punishable by up to 20 years in prison. And within three days of this law becoming, or this bill becoming law, someone was charged with this in Brockton. So within 72 hours, we saw the effect of this law. That's what's in the legislation. But like, as you mentioned, Dan, with the funding, funding is the key to getting all this in place. And since fiscal year 12, the legislature has increased funding on substance abuse by over 65%. And this year, budget makes some key investments in this area, 28 million for the Bureau of Substance Addiction Services, and 13 million to the Department of Mental Health, above last year. And some of the, what this is going towards is $2 million for 46 new transitional support services, beds, boosting the state's capacity by more than 13%. $2 million more for supportive case management services that benefit 500 families. Funding for 45 substance abuse addiction treatment beds at Taunton State Hospital. 1.5 million to expand District Attorney trafficking and heroin diversion programs. And a $3 million pilot for medication-assisted therapy in emergency rooms. That's just what we did, knew this year in the budget. But as you mentioned, Dan, I was able to secure a amendment in the House budget for $150,000 to combat substance abuse here in Braintree, working with you, the mayor's office. So this money will be used to create an office and full-time position focused on the growing substance abuse epidemic. You know, will help increase public knowledge, provide information on prevention and treatment options for families and people struggling. In addition, you know, we have a lot of committees focused on this, you as being among them. We need someone really to coordinate the efforts, so we're all running in the right direction, which we all are, I shouldn't say right direction, the same direction. And another big piece of having a substance abuse coordinator is the funding available out there. In this issue, you can't have someone part-time looking into it when they have the opportunity. You need someone focused every day on this. And as part of my chairmanship in the House, I deal with federal funding, so I understand the amount of money out there. And they're not going to come asking if you want it. You got to track it down. So this position will be key in applying for these grants and hopefully securing them. As an update to that, unfortunately, the money was not included in the Senate budget. But I'm working, there's a conference committee going on now between the House and Senate to work out the differences. I am optimistic that the money will be restored in the conference committee, meeting with the Speaker of the House tomorrow morning on this specifically, to get this restored. And I will stay in touch and keep you updated on those efforts. So that's what's happened this past year and past couple sessions. Next steps, the big issue going forward is insurance-covered treatment. We did a bill that increased it to 14 days mandated insurers had to cover treatment. But as you all know from studying this, and anyone dealing with this, 14 days is not long enough. Unfortunately, we can't solve this all with one crack of the bat. It's going to take baby steps. But there's a bill in a letter that just went out, co-signed to the chairman of the Healthcare Finance Committee. It's Senate Bill 1502. And this would increase that mandate to 30 days of treatment. Dealing with this issue with constituents and other people, seen it firsthand, where they want you kicked out, or you got to put $15,000 down on a credit card, or someone takes out a second mortgage to keep their child in treatment, because they finally got them someplace good. And the insurance company might say, well, we'll cover you, but you got to move them across the state. And that's just not a workable solution. So I'm hopeful that either within the next, I think it was seven weeks left in this session, or, you know, next session, we can mandate it that the insurance carriers have to cover treatment for 30 days. So that's what we're looking at going forward up in the legislature.
With that, any questions, or?
Thank you, Mark. Let's start on this end, with Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative, I know that you and I have gone to high school with individuals that are no longer with us. And we know folks that have unfortunately passed through this horrific epidemic, and we know families that have been affected by this. So I want to thank you for all, all the work that you've done on this. It's, it's been great, you know. Who would have thought at the beginning of this year that we'd be sitting here talking about this? So we've really accelerated what we're doing on top of the work that was already being done. My concern is that there might be individuals that would want to profit from the proliferation of, of the need for treatment centers. Is there anything in the works to ensure that there is an accreditation process or a certification process for treatment centers, so we're not seeing people just popping up and saying they're a treatment center?
Yes.
Or mandating?
There, there are additional efforts ongoing. A lot of the treatment centers do, because they get some state funding through the Department of Public Health, there are inspections. Where you see there's more of a concern are group homes or sober houses.
Sure.
And that's where you see the lack of regulations.
Right.
Inspection, where you could see the, you know, someone in it for the money, and not the well-being of the person.
Sure. And, and just if, to end on this, I think any way that we can continue to increase the amount of resources that are available for our schools, for prevention, education for our kids, our efforts that will yield results years down the road to hopefully stem the tide. You know, we were talking, and I meant to bring this up, with District Attorney Morrissey, that, you know, his staff sometimes get disappointed because they saw an uptick in the number of deaths in Norfolk County. And I think, you know, we could have saw a lot more if it weren't for the efforts of everyone and the work that they're doing. So I think we should be hopeful and be optimistic that if we're able to, you know, keep the numbers and then see a slower subsidence, there's just so many folks out there that are dealing with this, that the fact that there aren't more is a miracle. So I think that if we're able to increase the amount of resources and the mandated education and prevention efforts in the schools, it will yield some results later on down the line.
No, I fully agree, especially with the schools. We've seen some changes over the past few years in this legislation. Like I mentioned, that they are now required to have a plan in place that, you know, a school committee somewhere who wasn't comfortable dealing with this issue wouldn't put one in place. Now it's mandated. But, you know, as you mentioned, going to school here in Braintree, I remember going to Dare in fifth grade and not hearing anything on it until ninth grade again.
Right.
So there's gaps. And you got to be bold, and can't be afraid to get them as young as possible. Even, you know, working with the school psychologist, because a lot of the people struggling with addiction, as I mentioned, the co-occurring conditions, you see a lot of it with people who are diagnosed with ADD and ADHD. And it's making parents aware when their child is seeking services for that in their early age, that they could, you know, this is something else to be aware of and educate them on.
But just thank you very much for working in a very bipartisan manner. It's great to see that when folks are able to come together and pass stuff that is well worth passing, that great things can be accomplished. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Cusack, it's worth noting to those that are here and those that are home, this is a unique offering, a unique securing of funds for Braintree, that Representative Cusack has pushed through the House, has initiated through the House. There are no other towns that have had a representative go to bat like this. So for that, thank you, Mark. Second thing I'll make note of is the recovery houses that you talked about and the sober houses. If I'm not mistaken, I think that there's a move on foot to put greater regulations in place so that they adhere to at least a in place so that they adhere to at least a standard and to kind of collapse the profiteers.
That's being done, you know, within the administration with regulations, which is obviously helpful, but we need to do something in statute to really establish, you know, at least a minimum of what they have to comply with.
Yep, yep. I'll be watching House Bill fifteen-oh-two along the way to hopefully increase the thirty days of treatment. A question, Mark. You mentioned Bed Finder on the website. Could you, for those that are at home and for us, let us know what that website is?
Thanks. No, you embarrassed me because I don't have the website in front of me, but I'm sure if you Google Bed Finder, you know, treatment Massachusetts, it's also, it's on the Department of Public Health website.
Okay. So for those who are at home, Representative Cusack mentioned a website called Bed Finder. So if you Google it or otherwise, search for it, that's an opportunity for you to find if people are in dire straits to find it.
Mass.gov/dph is a wealth of information on substance abuse and treatment.
Thank you. Beyond, you mentioned that drug manufacturers are now going to be required to do more than just drop boxes, drug drop boxes. Can you go into that a little deeper, that what is going to be required of them going forward?
We left it a little vague that they have to work with the Department of Public Health to come up with the best drug stewardship program would be. You know, you don't want to see this happen, you know, you can't do a mail-back system. But right away, that they are actively involved now. For too long, and it's frustrating for us here at local level and at the state level because a lot of this is all mandated, you know, through the FDA, what these drug manufacturers, what they're profiting, what they're getting away with. And they're handling all this. I believe the couple that owns the company that manufacture OxyContin jumped up to the eighth wealthiest family in the country in the past few years.
Yeah.
You know, the FDA is not for the patients anymore, they really are for the profits of these corporations. In Congress, I know there's good efforts underway, and hopefully you see something because it's with the substance abuse or with the certain drugs even that they go and manufacture now, there's diseases being dropped off because it takes so long to get an FDA trial for that, it doesn't get fast-tracked like cancer drug would. So the system's a mess down there with the FDA. But what we can do is, if they're going to, you know, especially because, you know, being a biomedical hub, some of these companies are located in Massachusetts, and working with the DPH to establish what will be, what they determine to be the best way for them to participate in helping in this effort.
Just a comment on the education, early education of not just alcohol and tobacco, but also drugs in schools. There's an outstanding program, and I think Braintree might be looking at it right now. It's called the Michigan Model. And they start to educate their children in the school systems, and this is a program that can be purchased, so it isn't a matter of having to create curriculum. They start educating in the second grade, and they carry it right on through. So I'm with you a hundred percent, the earlier, the better. And that's all I have. Thank you for coming tonight, Mark.
Thank you.
We appreciate that money a great deal.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Representative Cusack, thank you so much for being here and for all you've done for Braintree on every issue, but especially on the opioid issue. So on the hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, is there anything we can do to help with the Senate?
Right now, it's really the six members of the conference committee that are determining it, and that's why I'm meeting with the Speaker tomorrow. But I've had a good track record in the past of having my money restored in conference, you know, something as important to this, and leadership knows how important this is to the community and what this will mean for us. I am very optimistic that this will get back in.
Okay. Well, if you need anything from us.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I'm sure, you know, we'll be there, whatever we can do, yes, because we appreciate it. Couple of questions for you. On, in the hospital state, when they have the post-evaluation and it's voluntary for them to stay longer, is there any data collected on that, on how many people are staying or not staying?
It will be tracked.
Okay. And you mentioned that there's information provided when they leave. Is that something that's universal throughout the state, or is it each dependent upon each different?
It will be, it will be information basically provided from the state to the hospitals to provide to the patients, so it will be uniform.
Okay. So they're working, working on that still?
Yeah. Department of Public Health has a lot on their plate with this legislation.
Okay. Seven days. The seven-day script, so it's a limit on first time.
Yep.
The seven-day for adults. And I know this has already passed, so what was the thinking on only on first time? Because say somebody's prescribed, you know, the first time now for a certain injury, and then nothing happens again until next year, and it's a whole new injury. Why, is it per injury, or is it just first time ever, I guess? First question.
It's their first time with that doctor.
Okay.
But what is two, well, one, it's a compromise. It was three days in the governor's bill. I forget what the Senate did, but we were in the middle at seven. There was no real debate about the minors should be at all times. Yeah, you would like to see it every time, but it's not how the sausage gets made.
Yeah.
And it's also for someone taking an opiate for the first time to understand how long they need it. You see this where you don't get asked, "What's your tolerance for pain?" You know, "I'll try it out on this and then come back to me." You can get a tooth pulled and get a thirty-day script.
Right. Okay.
And the person falls into thinking they need it, they need it, they need it.
Okay. And on the electronic medical records, and I know some of these are a lot of details you might not have, so if you don't, we can get it later, not, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot with all the little details. The electronic medical records, which will go into place on January first, two thousand seventeen, is there any talk or accommodations being done for the small practices that aren't using electronic medical records at the moment? Like, there's still some doctors' offices who use the three-part, the white with the yellow and the pink copy.
And they have till January to.
They have to, okay.
They have to. It's a mandate from the Chapter two-twenty-four, which was a healthcare cost containment, which was a follow-up in two thousand and six, the state enacted Affordable Healthcare. And the follow-up piece to that was in two thousand and twelve, it was a comprehensive bill from containing the costs because one of the biggest drivers of costs are redundant or unnecessary testing. You know, you can go to the hospital, get all the tests done, get discharged to a rehab facility, and they order the same test done again because they need the results in front of them, they don't have them from the hospital. So that, mandating this, you know, we did this in two thousand and twelve. The feds are also requiring a version of this, but we mandate across the board, and there's been funding in place and assistance in place for the smaller places to access this in order to digitize their records and going forward, how to use these systems.
Well, that's good to hear, that there's funding in place for that, so thank you for that, because I know that could be a hardship for some people. You mentioned screening within the school districts are required. Are there two specific grades, or is it up to the school districts to choose?
It's up to the schools.
Okay.
You know, working with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Okay, you answered that, okay.
You know, it's, you know, you're looking at, you know, middle school, later middle school or high school, you're going to be screening the young kids or.
Okay.
So there's some, there's discretion, but it's going to be within certain age groups or grades that makes the most sense.
Okay. And then my other questions were answered by previous speakers, so again, thank you so much for all your work, you really appreciate it. Thanks for all that you do.
And just a point to follow up about the screening of the grades, a lot of this is brand-new, unknown territory. So putting in place, and then we're going to track it all, get the findings, and then make the necessary tweaks. You know, we could determine maybe, you know, three, four, or five years out, what are the two best grades to screen and where you get the best results. And, you know, same thing with some of these other provisions of the bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Cusack, thank you for being here tonight, and I appreciate your work on this issue. You had mentioned the substance abuse education for communities, and they have to have a written policy, which I think is a substantial part of this bill, it's very significant and hopefully can motivate communities who have failed to do things to this point within their school departments. You mentioned that it has to be up-to-date. What is the, is there any oversight from the state to review these policies or these curriculums? What is the regulation of this requirement? Because my concern is, for example, here in Braintree, once we secure funding and do all the things that we need to do, there's going to be an entirely separate debate other than this, which has to do with substance abuse policy and what the curriculum looks like and what we're teaching. And I'm very concerned about that. I'm really concerned with creating an opioid-specific education, and I think that we do a lot of education on the escalation of usage from marijuana, alcohol, tobacco, and that's all well and good, but we really have to focus on opioids and the dangers of opioids. So there's a lot to be said when it comes to substance abuse policy and curriculum. From the state perspective, what's the oversight there? Is there any, was that included? Is it up to each community?
Yeah, it's not just a one-and-done, you have to annually provide the state, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, with your substance abuse curriculum. And they'll review that with the Department of Public Health to make sure that it is sufficient, it is up-to-date, and that it's effective.
Are they questioning the curriculum or the planning?
Yeah, they don't want someone, a school district just saying, you know, "We, you know, we graze over these areas, here's our policy." They want to make sure it's in-depth and it's, you know, it's substantive. It's not just, you know, complying with the bare minimum. And that's what the DESI and the DPH will be reviewing those policies when the schools have to comply annually.
So it'll be the Department of Public Health and Secondary Education both have oversight?
Yep, Elementary and Secondary Education.
Good, good. Because I think Public Health certainly should have a role in that, although with all, you know, no offense to the Department of Public Health, but they've been somewhat conservative on this issue or somewhat absent in different areas, so, but I think both mindsets have to, have to be included, education and public health. And I think the review of the curriculum is a major part of that because we could, we could write a policy, we could write an education policy, but if we don't have that curriculum reviewed, then we're not doing any good. We could write the policy and not implement it, and it doesn't do any good, and that's what my fear is. You had mentioned the bed website. I know there is other technologies that have been invented, and there's a few websites out there that attempt to collect bed availability data and post it online. What I've seen, the, and that's a very important part of this bill, it's key. What I've seen as the difficulty is getting treatment centers or detoxes to utilize on their end that technology and to put that information in. Is there any requirement right now to mandate that they use this website, or is it voluntary?
For the treatment facilities?
Yeah, for them to input that information.
It's not required, but it's obviously in their best interest.
Right.
To, you know, get people in when they have the availability. What we did in this was require that insurers update where they're covering and what beds are available. All too often, you get ahold of a place, they have a bed, "Great," or "What do they have for health insurance?" Oh, we don't take that.
Hmm, it's important.
So it's to provide all the information that you can see, you know, if you have Harvard Pilgrim or you have Mass Health, where you can, and where the beds are available, where you'll be covered.
Okay.
And talking to people who have been in treatment, and when they get out, you know, heartbreaking stories about people they met in detox that want to go to treatment but can't afford to.
Mm-hmm.
And then they're back out.
So can somebody access that information through the Bed Finder, or would they go to their insurance company as far as what's covered?
The law now requires the insurance companies to provide that information, where they will cover beds. So when you click on the website and find a bed available, it will let you know what insurance is taken there.
Very good. Section thirty-five, I know this isn't something we've discussed within this law, but there, section thirty-five, obviously for folks at home, is a petition that a family can do at court to involuntarily commit a family member to treatment. The issue that I've seen lately with section thirty-fives is when they put the warrant of apprehension out, when the court deems that this person needs to be apprehended and brought in for a section thirty-five hearing to commit them, they have to be brought in during court hours, so before four-thirty. Police departments will not apprehend that person, hold them overnight, and bring them to court in the morning. So you really have, you know, a shot, and I think they do it for three or seven days now, to get that person during court hours. Is there any discussion within the state or anything on the state radar to give courts the ability to, or police departments the ability to apprehend and hold somebody on a section thirty-five warrant after court hours?
Sure, it's been talked about. Unfortunately, we haven't progressed that far because there's an issue in front preventing that, and that is right now the Good Samaritan law, which, you know, you're with a friend that overdosing, you call nine-one-one, you're not going to be arrested. When a person is sectioned by their family and they arrive, that person has drugs on them, they can be charged. So it's trying to extend the Good Samaritan to cover the person being sectioned first, and there you, then you could have the police involved. Where you, I've talked to Bob Harnes, as you all know, Braintree resident, but also the Heather Mass Power Association, that there's apprehension among family members from having their, you know, son or daughter sectioned if out of the fear that they think they have something on them and they're going to be charged instead of getting the treatment. So that's the first step in order to get to, you know, the police involved in holding them over.
Yeah.
Obviously, you see, you know, it was recently, I think, on Sixty Minutes, that, you know, the Gloucester Program. So there are exceptions like that, but the real issue is extending the Good Samaritan to the person being sectioned first, and then you can move into that discussion about the police holding them.
Yeah, that's a, that's a huge part of it is, you know, you don't want that person to pick up additional charges, it's only going to exacerbate their situation.
You want treatment over jail. It's about forty-two thousand dollars to incarcerate someone for a year, it's about twenty-four thousand to get them treatment.
Yeah, that's right on with that. Yeah. Now, you mentioned civil liability, and I was happy to hear you say that. You know, one of the issues about, you know, there's so much, and you've done a good job on the state level on this issue, and this state has really made great strides, and this bill, which you're a part of and Governor Baker helped, or drafted, really is the most comprehensive substance, opioid substance abuse bill in the entire country. And I give our Commonwealth a lot of credit for that and those that are a part of it. You know, I always say, and I'm going to repeat it again because it's something that always has to be said, the real responsibility here is on the federal level. And, you know, as much as we're going to do locally and as much is going to be done in the state, you know, I don't know how much of a decrease you're going to see in actual overdose deaths until we reduce supply, until we reform the FDA, until we get the pharmaceutical money out of campaigns and have the pharmaceutical companies stop funding the FDA. So there's a lot that has to be done. And civil liability for somebody administering Narcan, I think, is an important part because it's an out, it shows the out-of-box thinking in this bill. You know, a lot of people don't realize, but on the federal level, one of the reasons that we even have this issue in the first place is because of, there's no cap on tort law in the United States, and you can sue for unlimited amounts of money for pain and suffering, and that really drove a concern around the liabilities of pain from the American Centers for Pain, and it really drove this infusion of money in the pharmaceutical industry to develop opioid prescription painkillers, because pain's subjective, anyone can sue for the liability of pain, and that's really where we get the creation of opioids in the pharmaceutical industry. And that really is a civil, civil issue. So that's on the federal level, but you boil that down to the state level and to address civil liabilities connected to the opioid issue on the state level, I think, is a really important, important solution, and I'm glad to see civil liability somehow included in this bill from what we can address in terms of civil liability in this bill. But, you know, as I said, this is a great bill, I want to thank you for your work on it. I know it's not easy. I know that, you know, as politics goes, there's pressures from the pharmaceutical industry, and I know that, you know, one end was at three and the other one was probably at. at 15 days' supply, and you ended up on seven, and that's just one example probably of the, of the industry pressure, but, you know, I do appreciate your work. I hope that in the, as we move down the road, we can reform kind of the loose ends of this bill. I know you can't get everything that you're looking for at first, but, you know, I would love to see us completely outlaw minors being prescribed opioids. I would love to see that seven-day reduced down to three, or to see some sort of restriction on what a seven-day supply is, because that's really left up to the doctors. You know, one doctor can say, I'm going to prescribe you, you know, one pill every two hours, and take that, you know, five times a day, and that's your seven-day supply, and that supply could be totally different. So the volume within that window of time, I think, has to be addressed going forward. But great bill where it stands, going forward, I'd love to see those things outlawing for minors, addressing volume for seven-day supply, addressing the Section 35, which I know you're already working on, and some of those things, but thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Rep. Cusack, I appreciate all the conversations we have, pretty much on a weekly basis, sometimes on a daily basis, and I think that this landmark legislation is extremely comprehensive, because it covers all of the things that we've been talking about here, and at our committee level, and that is prevention, education, treatment, intervention treatment, et cetera. So I mean, as you follow through all the things, as I wrote down all the different things in the bill, I mean, you basically cover it from the beginning until the end, and I commend your efforts on that, and I know that you were very involved in helping this get passed. And in regards to the 150, I'm sure that you'll be successful. And I think that, as you mentioned earlier, it's so important, in looking at funding, that we are looking at, to have someone there to coordinate all the efforts here in the town, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you do on this. Before you go, though, I have some folks in the audience, and if anyone would like to speak, I know, Mr. Houston Bean, if you'd like to come up.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you, we appreciate that you're working so hard on getting us the help that we need in Braintree, and I thank you all for what you're doing. I think we've seen a huge swing in the last year of Braintree opening their eyes, and starting to do something with this. We've been talking a lot about what the government can do for us, and I'm trying to do something, what private people can do for the situation as well. That's why, you've heard me talk about the Sun Will Rise Grief Group, and now we're expanding to the Sun Will Rise Foundation, which is a group that will deal with awareness, education, prevention, treatment, scholarships, recovery, and family support as well, looking for help from the public to help fund some of these things that won't get completely funded by the government. Tonight, we gave our first scholarship to Dan O'Leary, who just graduated from Braintree High School. He's going to be an EMT, and is graduating tomorrow already. He was a real go-getter, so he started it before he even graduated high school. So we funded his class to be an EMT, which was really good, because I'd like to get that group of first responders who have care, compassion, and understanding of people who are dealing with substance abuse and substance use issues, to understand when they report to the scene of another overdose, that they're not going to have this jaded view, and that they understand that this is a disease, and people need help and want help. So I'm glad to see that Dan will be on the front lines for us soon with that. And we'll also be doing scholarships to help those people who are transitioning from being in detox, and then going maybe, you know, into other transitional living, and then maybe into a sober house. A lot of times, they haven't been able to have a job, they don't have family support anymore, and it costs money to live in these sober houses, they're not free. So we'll be able to provide scholarship money to them for their first month, perhaps, of living, while they get themselves together, and then are able to get a job, and start, so they can get into that housing that they need. So anybody that helps by coming to Beanstalk on July 15th, will help us start to fund the Sun Will Rise, and hopefully help the town of Braintree, along with the rest of the parents that are already doing things, like the Thompsons, who provide education and other services through their foundation for their son. So I'd just like to thank all of you for everything that you guys are doing.
Thank you. Counselor?
Thank you, Robin. And do you have any other information on, if there are people listening at home, can they send donations to your foundation, the Sun Will Rise Again Foundation?
They can. We are pending 501(c)(3), so we're being fiscally sponsored by Magnolia New Beginnings, who's a general statewide group, who has the same desire that we do. So they are kind of umbrella-ing us as we are in the middle of this process. So a check could be payable to Magnolia New Beginnings, sent to me at, I'm taking the collection at my office, so it's a Robin Houston Bean at Houston Insurance, 541 Washington Street, Braintree, Mass., 02184. And the Sun Will Rise Foundation has full control over how the funds will be spent, but until we're, you know, legally that 501(c)(3), we want to do everything on the up and up, we don't want to take money when we should not be taking it yet. So they've been generous enough to do that without any fee, and there are some fiscal sponsors who do do that, but they charge you a 5% fee, so they're not charging any fee at all. So we were really lucky, that I've been involved with them for a long time. They run the family support group for parents in Massachusetts who have lost a loved one, and it's a really great group, because we're able to bond with other people who understand what we're, what we're feeling. So, and if anybody has any questions, they can reach me at addictiongriefgroup@gmail.com, or they can call me with any questions, 781-789-4604. We are looking for sponsors for the night, or just general donations, we're looking for volunteers. We'll be, we have an event page on Facebook, and we will be having a volunteer meeting shortly, and that will be posted.
Okay, Robin. I want you to repeat those numbers again, because you were very quick.
Sorry.
No, for those that are home, it's important that they get the number.
Sure. Phone number 781-789-4604, and the email is addictiongriefgroup@gmail.com.
And one other thing, when your foundation is squared away, but until then, the check should be made out to whom?
Check should be payable to Magnolia New Beginnings, and mailed to me at my office, so Robin Houston Bean, Care of Houston Insurance, 541 Washington Street, Braintree, 02184.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Hume?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question for Dan to answer, but I just want to publicly thank you for all the work you're doing, and all the work you're doing, especially in memory of your son, Nick, to keep his memory alive, and to educate. You've educated me so much, and I thank you for all the help you've given to me, and I've said to you before, keep doing what you're doing, because you are helping so many people. Thanks, Robin.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Robin. Representative Cusack, thank you so much for taking the time, I know that you guys have a lot going on, and we appreciate all the hard work that you've done, and your knowledge, I mean, you're a knowledge guy. When I ask you a question, you have an answer, and if you don't have the answer, you always find it, so I really appreciate that. Any further discussion?
You're a can-do guy.
Absolutely. All right, do I have a motion? Oh, next meeting, sorry, sorry. Next meeting, big meeting, Monday, the 20th, 6:30, right here, with the Braintree Public Schools. That'll be pretty much everyone, school committee, superintendent, et cetera. And then we have on June 29th, at 6:30 as well?
6:30.
At 6:30 as well, right here, we have Narcan training, and that's free to anyone, so they can get trained and get Narcan. It'll be right here as well. And I thank Counselor Clifford and Counselor Hume, as well as the other councils, for putting together different speakers and the Narcan training. I know Counselor Hume has worked hard at getting that scheduled. And look at our Facebook and our Twitter, there's always something out there, information for folks to learn from. And Robin, your courage and strength inspires us to keep moving forward and to do everything we can. Thank you so much. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.